Great. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Finance and Administration Committee Meeting and Special Meeting of the Board of Directors, Marin Municipal Water District on September 28th. May please have a roll call.
Yes, good morning. Director Ranji Kush.
Here.
Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt. And Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
Okay, may I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Vote for the agenda, or we, please?
Um, yes, and there are no comments on the adoption of the agenda. Director Kush.
Aye.
Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Aye.
And Chair Smith.
I, any public comment only on items, on the closed session item only?
There are none.
Great. Alright, so we will convene the closed session and we will, we will come back in approximately a half hour. Thank you. Greetings. We're reconvening the Marin Municipal Water District Special Board Meeting and Finance and Administration Committee Meeting. Just exited closed session at 9:30 AM and we have nothing to report. Alright, now we'll move on to the open session of our meeting. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda?
There are none.
Great. Any, any report outs that anyone else wants to have then, or, or anyone? I do have one quick one that I'd like to just start the meeting slightly unusual, but I think it's significant enough. I just returned from Washington DC with, with some of our staff, with Sean Horn and Paul Selye. With a fairly significant important set of meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers, with NOAA, the Bureau of Reclamation, several of our senators and congresspeople around getting access to word of funding that has been earmarked. And I was super impressed with both Ben Miller who supported us and with Sean and Paul's knowledge about how to work within the system. And our goal is to help free up the $28 million that has been earmarked in the 2022 budget. And we're shooting for beginning that now, so hopefully we can get that off the ground. We're trying to get into the 2024 work plan. That work plan kicks in within 60 days of Biden signing the budget. And whenever that happens, and so when that happens, then we, then we kind of accelerate our efforts. The advice that we got from, from the Pentagon, from the Army Corps of Engineers was to go back to San Francisco and get their buy-in, run it up the chain for this beginning process in 2024, and then bring it back to, bring it back to national headquarters and hopefully get their approval and then it'll get signed and that would happen in, in the spring of 2024. That's a not guaranteed effort. We're doing everything we can to show our plans and feasibility studies, but we've done a lot and this is mostly around just the beginning of that effort. So just one of the $28 million is what we're looking for. And then we'll have a more robust second ask in the 2025 budget and these things tend to go on over years. So you draw it down over time. The fact that we raised rates and the fact that we have fairly significant bond capacity to match some of these potential grants stands super well for us. Showing that our community has expressed a desire to increase our water supply and storage and protect our watershed. And, and, and that we are an organization that's ready to make change. And we're doing that because we really are still in a crisis as far as I'm concerned. We have a very limited water supply and we almost ran out two years ago. And so we feel like we're on a sprint. And then just one last comment. I mean, part of the reason not only we the first water district in the state of California, but we were also the first one that Gavin Newsom, our governor, stated it was in a drought emergency. So those are one good first and one not good first. And so we're, we're, we're top of mind and I think our asks are, are pretty solid with what they're looking for. So want to make sure everyone knew because people have been asking about the trip. It was, it was quite a successful trip and I'm hopeful for the future. We've not gone to the government, federal government for these kinds of funds in this manner in the past. So it's, it's a big effort. Okay, so moving on, handed off to you, Brett?
Yeah. Sure. Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry, we do have approval of the minutes on the agenda if we want to take care of that housekeeping.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes on the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Great. Roll call.
Director Kush.
Aye.
Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Aye.
And Chair Smith.
Aye.
And there are no comments from the public.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Alright, good morning, directors. My name is Brett Upandall, Finance Director for the district. I do have two reports here today. The first item is our monthly financial update. Just as a reminder, we are two months into the fiscal year, so not a lot of data here yet. About 16% of the way through. I do have a little bit of a slimmed down report today, just knowing that it is just two months of the year. And all the numbers that you see here still reflect revenues received under the old rate structure. So I think we're looking at some of the leading indicators, obviously still being, you know, variable water sales and consumption. And so I think the, one of the main charts we're looking at here is the three, you know, primary revenues, water sales, service charge and watershed fee. Again, this would, would be fixed revenues in the two right-hand columns or the center in the right hand for the service charge and watershed fees. So those are coming in as planned. Water sales there in the left, a little bit of good news early in the year, just, you know, in general, as, you know, consumption ticked up in the summertime. We did see two months in a row of a little bit of revenue in excess of the budget. Again, you can kind of see from the budget numbers there, those are still the old rate structure, you know, targets. And so it'll be much more informative to see September, October and November when we get there. But generally good news here, you know, in the sense of being in front of the curve a little bit, albeit to a lower budget. And I think what we're seeing here is, you know, the second month of the year, you know, the fiscal year being August, we did see a bit of an uptick in overall consumption, water sales. So this, the chart you're looking at here is water sales through August. You can see the fiscal year 24, the right-hand side was a little over 4,300 acre feet, which was more than last year through two months and also more than fiscal 22 through the two months. So generally starting to see that a little bit of a return to normal. I do note on the top there, we're still about 10% below our longer-term averages, which is to be expected here as we slowly come out of, of, of the the lows of the drought in terms of overall consumption. But we are seeing just anecdotally is just a little bit more consumption here, as I mentioned, you know, five or so percent increase compared to last year. And we're starting, we did see a little bit of use in the higher tiers there in that last month, which would have been, you know, late June, early July. Again, old tier structure, so it'll be more informative going forward. But nonetheless, it was good to finish out the last two months with a little bit of an uptick in terms of last fiscal year and in terms of the last couple of months of the summer.
This, here you're showing revenues?
This is actually consumed acre feet of water.
Consumed acre feet.
I see the dollar sign up there on the 10-year average, but that's, everything, everything else there is, is just acre feet.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. So again, just briefly today, just because we're, you know, spending more time on the other topics, you know, we're generally on track with the budget early in the year, but we will be reporting out in more detail as we start to see a couple of months of the actual new rate structure as we start to get a more complete picture of how the summer ended. Happy to take any questions on this item, if there are any. Otherwise, happy to move on. Yep. Alright, this, the second item I have.
There is public comment. Um, Mr. Topher Gaylord, please?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Christopher Gaylord. I live in Kent Field. And I've got some comments. I received my first bill using the new rate structure and MMWD represented that in 2024 fiscal year 24, rates would increase roughly 20% to the public, rate payers and the press. Your budgeted sales in item number two, attachment one in the agenda. Your budgeted sales fixed charges and fees show an increase of 49% in aggregate for fiscal year 24, an overall unit increase of 8.7%. My first bill in the new cycle is up 18% in units. That were consumption as referred to Brett. Water rate fees are up 147% and my overall bill is up 65%. This is not a 20% increase. It's the largest increase in MMWD history. And it's the first year of a four-year increase with rates rising again in '25, '26 and '27 between 10 and 20%. In addition, we've added a 23% surcharge that kicks in when reservoirs are at a plentiful 81% April 1st. So this is obviously not consistent what was communicated to rate payers. So I'd, I'd like some feedback on how we're reconciling a, a budgeted value of increases of 49% for the full fiscal year. Again, this is in your attachment number one with the 20% that was communicated. I'd also ask that you provide in future public in the public agenda item that that we have a tracking tool that tracks the Bartle Wells assumptions that were made in the model in which MMWD used to model the fee increases that you please add comparable expenses from prior year in the monthly P and L that was included. And I'd ask finally that we track as we get going on this, because you guys are going to get a lot of feedback on this. This is just the very beginning. I was quick to see my bill. But what percent of rate payers in September and October have increases over 20%? What's the average rate increase in the, in the bill cycle? And with that, I'll give back to you.
Thank you. We do have one more public comment. Mr. Bill Sauter.
Yeah, good morning. I, I appreciate the early look at water sales for the year. And it's always kind of a two-prong sword. On, on the one hand, in a meeting like this, I think we like to see those water sales go up and see the revenue increase. From a water supply point of view, with us sitting at, at two years' worth of supply, I, I think is, is the latest measurement. I think we're feeling that maybe we're using too much water based on the capacity of our watershed and, and existing storage. I was really impressed by what Director Smith had to say on his return from Washington and the activities we're taking to get hold of tens of millions of dollars to add to the budget. I think that's really terrific. It occurred to me during his presentation that it, it might make an even stronger punch to the, the, the feds if, if we are at once trying to increase our water supply, but at the same time conserving non-essential water use like outdoor irrigation with potable water. If, if we could say, A, we're doing our best job to leverage the supply that we have and B, we need more supply because we don't feel comfortable with a two-year supply as opposed to a four-year supply. I'm wondering going forward is, as we look at water consumption, if we could somehow regularly find a way to differentiate indoor water use from outdoor water use. I think it would be good for the board and for staff and for the public to become familiar with, with those relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great, moving on. Yep, thank you.
Alright, item number two is, is a bit longer and so we'll kind of set the, set the stage here. This is a review of our financial policies with a focus on reserves. And so you, the board may remember last month, we came to you in the finance committee and kind of gave a higher level overview of all four of our kind of key financial policies and really started to hone in on, on the reserve targets. Knowing that we had probably the most work to do there and they do make the, the biggest impact on kind of long-term, you know, fiscal trajectory of the organization. So today we're going to kind of take a little bit deeper dive and I'm going to have some recommendations here at the end in, in terms of where I think we should be going with, with next steps. But we'll review some of that best practices and industry guidance. We'll take a look at what we talked about last month in terms of our agency-specific considerations here in Marin. We'll take a look at what some other agencies in the area are doing with respect to reserves. And then, as I mentioned, we'll go through some initial recommendations and, and receive some board feedback there. And then we'll talk about next steps for how we codify any of these changes that may be coming. So these first four, four or five slides are just review from last month. So I'll go through them pretty quickly, but I'm, I'm happy to stop and discuss if we need to. When we talk about best practices and industry guidance, we typically look to these, you know, four or five, you know, national agencies, the GFOA, the American Water Works Association, Special Districts Association here in California, the ICMA at the bottom there, International City Council, County, City and County Management Association, as well as the Water Environment Federation. Each of those have their own suggestions and recommendations for how to, how to best structure fiscal policies and budget practices for, for the long term. And some of these are more specific to utilities, some are more specific to, you know, general government agencies, local government agencies. So we try to make sure we're getting enough input from all of the professional associations when we go about, you know, doing these analyses and making recommendations. To summarize what we found looking over the summer and last spring in those areas, the gist of it is you need to hold enough cash to make sure you have enough cash and you need it. And then typically, you, you know, in, in terms of how much cash you need, you look at these four or five areas. How do you structure your budget? Because the, you know, reserves and budget kind of go hand in hand. Making sure you have either sufficient funds in the current year and/or in reserves as more of a backstop. And so, you know, where our baseline levels are for contingency water purchases and equipment replacement and then how rev, how volatile the revenue can be. I think we talked about it in last year's budget process. We do have a pretty lean budget in many of these areas. So reserves are more important in, in a lot of areas here. Just to make sure that, you know, we don't cut ourselves too thin over the two-year budget practice. And then we also know, as, as we just talked about in the last item and over the last couple of years, obviously volatility of our revenue goes hand in hand with our consumption, with the climate around us and with the state as a whole in terms of climate change moving forward. So it's becoming more and more volatile, to say the least. Unanticipated expenditures, I think, you know, part of what we look at here is we, we're, you know, under a four-year rate cycle. So it's impossible to predict everything that happens in four years. Whether that's on the weather side being drought and/or inflation in the last years, as we saw, and you get towards the back end of a four-year rate cycle and you have two years of inflation and it can really start to make a big impact on the overall expense trajectory. And then unplanned infrastructure repairs, you know, here as, as Director Smith mentioned, you know, we were the first water district in California. So therefore we do have some of the oldest infrastructure. One, I hear you saying, we are a very old water district, over 100 years old. We have many unplanned infrastructure repairs. Strategic and accelerated infrastructure replacement. So a lot of times it's a good best practice to have saved enough money to be able to make strategic investments and not have to cut the budget in other areas when you want to be able to explore, you know, something that may be for efficiency or for granting or for matching grant funds, as again, as Director Smith mentioned. Or for other things that just may be a good idea for the district that comes up, you know, over the four years that maybe not a part of the core CIP. Emergency replacement for catastrophic, catastrophic events that goes hand in hand with our insurance policies. But again, there are cash flow needs in the meantime and things that may not be covered by the FEMA's of the world or other, other relief agencies. So here in California, that specifically speaks to fires, floods and earthquakes. And then we've talked about having enough on hand for litigation and insurance. So as we look at those and as we look at our current policies, this is our current reserve levels and our targets, right? So we have our policy targets in writing and we have our, you know, preliminary balance there. We're still closing the books, but these are the six reserve funds that we have on our books in terms of our policy. The minimum ball, balance there is listed in the, in the, in the text. For insurance, we have a six times our self-insured retention, which is basically six times our deductible. Workers' compensation currently is determined by an actuary study. Our capital reserve is set at one year or an annual budget of capital expenses. Our unrestricted reserve is set at six months of our operating budget. And we don't have defined targets for rate stabilization or for water supply projects. How that translates there in this policy target column with the dollars is you kind of add all those up and we have what would prescribe to us as about $110 million of cash that we should be holding to, to meet our targets fully. And then over there, the preliminary balance, again, this is after two years of drawing down our reserves for the drought and kind of years of historical practice, we have about 42 million or 41.8 million in, in our actual reserves in these categories. And you can see there at the top, insurance is one of the ones we're the lowest on. And I'll talk more about why that's more of a, kind of a planned, you know, event as opposed to something that we were surprised by. The $18.6 million target there at the top is, is one of the more outsized targets that we have. The others are more in line or at least more in line with expectations. We knew that we drew down our capital budget over the last couple of years to kind of help weather the storm of the drought and same with our operating budget, kind of took the brunt of our lack of revenue. So those two were drawn down, you know, purposefully and they kind of were used as designed. And that's what we're talking about now. How do we build them up and, and what, what's the right pace and then what's the right overall schedule? Again, this kind of, you know, closes out the summary slide. So this was just the last two or three years, again, showing we had about 70 million in discretionary reserves back in 2021 pre-drought. And those were drawn down over the last two years to the tune of about 30 to 35 million dollars. So we did a ground up analysis, kind of what would it take if we just started, you know, building our reserves from scratch if we didn't kind of look at those six categories that have been with the district for, for the last decade or so? You know, if we just use those industry-specific guidelines under budget structure and our revenue structure, you know, our asset condition of our infrastructure and our, our other risks. And without going through each one of these, as we did that last month, I'll just say that, you know, on, on the low end, it looks like about 38 or, you know, close to 40 million would be a general target if we really wanted to be, you know, on, on the lower end of recommendations. The medium is probably, you know, generally where we would end up and that's 73.9 million. And then if you really wanted to be conservative and go on the high end, that would lead us more towards this $110 million level, you know, within each bucket. And I think, you know, going back a slide here, not to make us too dizzy, but going back a slide. In 2021, we had about $70 million in reserves, which coincides pretty nicely to this, you know, $73 million kind of medium range. So you know, looking at it two or three different ways, I think that tells us this, this 73 to 75 million dollar range is probably in the right, you know, category overall for cash. And then I think we can obviously debate, you know, which buckets they go in and how to get there, you know, on the best, you know, practical path, but 73.9, you know, that 75 million range seems to be, you know, a nice sweet spot from two or three different angles. So then we look at what do other agencies around here in the Bay do, other water districts here in the Bay do. And again, I would put a big caveat here that we're all structured differently, right? Some of these are much bigger, i.e. East Bay Mud, about 10 times the size of what we are. Some are smaller. Some also run wastewater operations. Some are part of the state water project. Some get property taxes. So there's all a lot of, you know, different variations as to why you'd hold this level of reserves. But I tried to kind of put them all into an area where we can at least compare, you know, close to apples to apples here and see what kind of buckets each other agency uses. You can see that insurance and workers' comp are not as common to have them called out in, in board policies. Although I'm sure those agencies still do hold funds for those two areas as their, you know, best practice would be to hold enough funds to pay those claims within a rate cycle. Capital reserve is interesting. You know, we have a one-year CIP. An agency as large as East Bay Mud has no stated target for their CIP reserve. Alameda is similar to us having one year. And then you can see San Ramon and Contra Costa are both at the two-year mark. In terms of unrestricted operating, we're in the higher end, right? Six months for, for our target. Look across the bay and you see three months, three months, four months and six months. So generally in that range, but we would be on the higher side there. Rate stabilization is a common revenue, common reserve to have in board policies. And you can see that it ranges from, you know, 20% of annual revenue to 50% of annual revenue, depending on, on the agency. We have no target and Contra Costa doesn't have a target as well. Water supply project, that is more unique to us here and it's new, as, as the board recalls, we said it last year. Again, no, no targets across the board there, but it is, we, we do have our our reserve and our target of two and a half million a year we're putting into that. And then other I just put there, because like, again, there's, you know, 10 or 15 other categories that, that some of these reserves do fall into. I'll just note the bigger ones there. Alameda holds a $10 million emergency reserve. San Ramon Services District holds two years of debt service on the side. And then Contra Costa has a, you know, four or five other accounts that account for emergencies and vehicle replacements and things like that that are not typically in board level policies, but they do include them in their policy language. So in a way to try to get this to a kind of an apples to apples at the bottom there, I tried to translate, you know, what, if you add all those up, not counting capital, because that can really be a kind of a monkey wrench into the equation, but just operating and kind of working capital reserves. What is it as, as a percentage of their operating budget? And for us, it's right around 50% for our targets. Other agencies are a little higher there. Alameda County and San Ramon Services District being, you know, closer to 65 or 75% than East Bay Mud being a little lower. So what does this tell us? Again, our, our current policies are probably close to the right range and the bottom line, right? And then the lowest, you know, common denominator. It's just we hold a lot in our unrestricted operating reserve and don't have as many other buckets flushed out. And other agencies hold a little bit more in their CIP. So again, we're, our policy language tells us we're right in the general, general sweet spot for where we should be. That's just a matter of which buckets do we want to put things into and how tightly do we want to define them? So the next five or six slides here are, are me going through each and every one of our buckets and kind of saying, you know, where, where could we make changes if we decided to? And if those changes are made, what would be our recommendation?
Brett, can I ask just a quick question on the, on that? And if you don't have the information right now, that's okay, but those agencies that you're comparing, do they have in-place drought rates?
I don't have it offhand, but my experience is that most all of them do. They have the drought rates, at least in their code, to be able to pull them when they want to. I don't think any of them are active right now, but I do think they're all, you know, at least in the code for if they need to pull them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I would also say, I think in some of these, the, the ones that are more in tune with the state water project, they also have pass-through language in their rates where if the state water agencies, you know, increase the wholesale price, they just pass that along directly. So they don't, they don't have that expenditure risk on their own reserves. They have that pass-through mechanism. Okay, so the first one here, insurance, and I mentioned this at the beginning, we have, you know, right now our policy is six times our self-intention, self-insured retention, which is six times the combined deductibles for each of our reserve pots. I think we all feel that's too high and I think as a district, we've been keeping it at, at much lower levels for, for quite a while. Knowing that we're not going to have each and every one of our, you know, insured, you know, potential losses, you know, hit within one year or four years. So the six times retention results in an $18.6 million target. On the bottom there, my recommendation would be to have a minimum balance of at least one times our self-retention for each category. And have a target balance of two times our self-insured retention, which is right where we're at right now, 6.2 million.
Do you know Brett, what insurance company requirements are for the same risk?
What insurance company requirements are?
What, what magnitude do they have to reserve?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. Yeah.
That's all the reinsurance market and that's where they're, they're struggling right now.
Sure, but it's also the, the primary insurers. I mean, they got to face the heat too.
Brett, do you want to go through each of these one by one or wait until the end?
You saw, at the, at the end, it summarizes it all together. So I think it might be helpful to see it to the end because it's a different, you know, different buckets as we go. What I would say, and I skipped over this beforehand and my apologies, but one, one thing we did see when we looked at best practices, as well as some of the other comparable agencies, is that not only did they have a target, but they had a minimum balance and a maximum balance or, you know, it's something kind of a range to shoot for. And I think when I, when I look at our language, it says this is a minimum balance as we shall hold. And I think that $110 million overall is probably more than a minimum. And so I think part of what I'm trying to do with the recommendations here is to establish a true minimum and then to also establish targets that we can have as more discretionary kind of budget goals as we go through the process in the next couple of years, but really to call a minimum, a real minimum and not to have something that's too high for, for an actual operational minimum. So in this slide, you can see that I think a minimum would be 3.1. That's probably pretty low, but I think we could work it if we had that as a minimum balance. And I think a target balance for any funding cycle would be, you know, that's $6.2 million in this particular one. Workers' compensation, I'm not making any recommendations for change. These are set by an actuary now. It's a common practice to have an actuary. Take a look at your, you know, current and future liabilities. And so right now we have $6.6 million set aside and I think we should just stay right out that, we know the actuaries know, know best in this area and it seems to be a pretty, you know, stable amount for us over the past couple of years and there are no change recommendations here. For our capital reserve, right now we have one-year CIP. And in an, in an agency like ours, where we have cash-funded CMF for the majority of our capital program, I don't think we need to hold that much aside each year. Obviously, you know, from a finance director perspective, you know, the more cash, the better, but you know, from a more balanced kind of district-wide priority perspective. I think, you know, we have flexibility on the reserves if we need to use them for capital, but I think a true working capital, capital reserve fund should just cover the capital program. And I think with cash coming in each year due, due to our CMF, I think as long as we hold enough to manage for, you know, either grant matching or unanticipated cost overruns or other, you know, new projects that maybe weren't in the CIP that we don't want to have to swap out. I think holding a minimum balance of 25% should kind of do the bare minimum, just, you know, cost contingencies. And holding 50% of our annual revenues for that source would give us a little bit more flexibility over time for grant matching and for maybe new projects. And so I would say as we, as we re, you know, calibrate our targets, making our targets based on our CMF revenue makes more sense rather than our overall expense budget. The board may remember we're increasing our expense budget over the next four years pretty dramatically, right? To be almost double the total CIP. And so we're doing that mostly with our rate revenues and we're doing that for targeted investments in water supply and targeted investments in And so we're doing that mostly with our rate revenues and we're doing that for targeted investments in water supply and targeted investments in deferred maintenance. And I think to do that and then to say, and then we also have to hold more, you know, monies in reserve because we're funding higher. It doesn't necessarily make sense to me. I think you want to hold monies in reserve to match kind of the, the revenues that are coming in and the unanticipated expenses that come our way. So at least for this budget cycle, I think we would rely on our cash and on our expenditure plan to kind of fund the capital projects. And let the minimums again, be the minimums here to hold us for if there's anything we didn't anticipate. Unrestricted operating, similar, this is a pretty high target, six months annual budget. And I think in many ways, this agency has used this, this to be kind of a catchall for, you know, all the other, you know, buckets that you could put into reserve policy. So 52 million would be our target here, you know, if we just went by our policy. Again, and taking a look at best practice guidance, and if we are going to fill out some of the other buckets, you know, that we'll talk about here in the next couple of minutes. I think just holding, you know, two months at a minimum and three months as a target is sufficient. That gives us enough to get through the, you know, unanticipated, you know, ups and downs of the rate cycle as well as the budget cycle. But I think what we would essentially be doing is taking the additional amount here between the 26 and 52 and putting that into two or three other buckets, as we'll talk about. To make sure we're kind of funding each appropriately. So two to three months would be the targets here, minimum to target balance. Uh, rate stabilization. So this is one that, you know, we commonly, or it's commonly referred to as a drought reserve, right? In other agency documents, you see it specifically calling for, you know, to smooth out revenue fluctuations over the rate cycle. To make future rate increases more orderly and less impactful to our customers. And so in this case, we do have a rate stabilization reserve, but it does not have a target. It has no minimum balance and no target balance. And we really haven't not touched it much, except for, you know, during the drought, we did draw on it for some of the unanticipated needs on the expense side. So I would say, you know, the recommended policy changes here would be in the language down there would be to more specifically call out that this is funding to mitigate the impacts of revenue fluctuations. So a true drought reserve. And to assure our minimum debt service coverage, which is also another way of saying, if we don't get our revenues in, we can transfer money in here to, to make the bondholders, you know, happy is not probably not the right word, but to make them, you know, comfortable with the fact that we have enough reserves to transfer in and cover our debt service coverage for the year. And so as we look at that, I think, you know, we do have drought rates in place. And so the board remember, will remember that those kick in after 20% of our drought levels and our drought rates. So the first 10%, I think we need to hold aside, that would be the minimum 10% of our variable water revenue, about 8.9 million. I think a target balance to shoot for kind of at the beginning of a funding cycle, beginning of a rate cycle would be 20% of our variable water revenue. That would give us essentially enough to withstand, you know, a 5% reduction four years in a row, you know, type of a thing. So I think to call it out more specifically as, you know, more of a, like I said, a drought reserve for impact of revenue fluctuations. And also to be able to be used for debt service coverage if needed. And to give it those two markers of 10 to 20% seem to make sense to me. And that essentially, like I said, kind of pulls it away from unrestricted operating and into this category. Water supply project, this one's a little bit tricky. Again, this is a newer reserve. We just added it last year. And I think, you know, acknowledging the fact that we're just beginning the roadmap process and we haven't identified specific projects yet. What I'm doing here is just recommending that we kind of hold the course for what we set during the rate cycle and during the budget plan, which is an annual contribution of two and a half million dollars. Obviously that's not going to be enough to fund any major project, but it is at least getting us on the right track. Starting to establish that little bit of seed funding or whatever you may call it. To the point where at the end of this rate cycle, we'll have 10 million because we'll have two and a half per year over the four years. And then I think once we come to more of kind of clarity on, on the projects we'll be taking, we can always add to this and change it in the future. I would remind the board also that we do have, you know, active funding for this in our budget, right? We have a roadmap funding of about nine million dollars a year, you know, starting next year going forward. So this isn't the only funding we have for water supply. Obviously this would just be what we're setting aside, not counting our current expenses. So this is kind of that balance of our current budget versus what we'd hold in reserves. And so again, I think just to reflect how we are currently funding it and to know that, you know, $10 million is a drop in the bucket, but at least helps us get off the ground for whether it's a pilot project, a grant matching, or kind of the beginnings of a, of a larger effort. It's, it's on the right track now. And so I'd say we just hold the course until we have more direction from the board. And then finally pension stabilization. And so this is a reserve that we've never formally put into policy before. We've had a pension stabilization kind of fund in practice. And so, you know, on the accounting side, on the budget side, we hold it and we, you know, we account for it. It was originally a $2 million balance four or five years ago. And we have not really codified it in our policy language. That's why you see all the NAs there at the top. And so my attempt at codifying this going forward would be, I think we need to hold enough to withstand fluctuations in the CalPERS investment cycle. And so they have a kind of a projection tool that we worked with the last couple of months. And so basically, you know, a minimum balance would be if they have a 0% investment gain, meaning if they have one year of, you know, not making their targets and having a flat return. The impact of that to us over four years is about three and a half million dollars, right? It's phased in, it'll come to us, you know, each of the next three or four years. So to not have to cut our budget elsewhere, to be able to make our purse payments while we let the markets kind of even themselves out. My recommendation as a minimum balance is three and a half million. And then the target balance, I think, to be more conservative would be to cover the amount, the, the amount or the impact to us if CalPERS had a 5% loss. And so again, recall the CalPERS shoots for about a, you know, six and three quarter percent gain each year. A 5% loss would effectively be about a 12%, you know, loss from their target. To us over four years, as they smoothed that into us would be about $6 million in unanticipated expenditures. And so I think, you know, the reality of, of PERS having a 0% gain, you know, happens all the time and a 5% loss is what happened last year. It happens. They'll make money in the future. They'll, you know, the cycles go through. And so, you know, you don't want to have to have a whipsaw in your rates or your, you know, cut of the projects when next year it's going to go back the other way. So this is just a way to smooth that out during the rate cycle. But I think, you know, to try to put, you know, bookends around how much we should hold in our pension stabilization and to call it out for, we're going to use this money to offset, you know, unanticipated, you know, requirements from CalPERS over the rate cycle that doesn't have to, you know, cause us to cut budget elsewhere. I think helps us just really kind of, you know, work through this reserve and actually put it into place to, to keep the organization running despite what happens in the CalPERS portfolio. And so that is the end of kind of my, you know, bucket by bucket presentation here. And then I'm trying to summarize it on this final table. Hopefully you can see that well enough, but what this does is it again, takes the, the six buckets that we've had. Adds one to it to codify our pension stabilization there at the bottom. Changes it from current policies of, you know, six times your XIR for insurance, six months of, of operating in an annual capital budget. Which was, as you can see here at the bottom, 110 million again, for a total prescription of reserves. Kind of adds a minimum balance and a minimum amount would be in this 50 million range. So again, that's a little bit lower than that kind of sweet spot. We talked about that 70 million, but I think as a true minimum, you know, 50 million is probably, you know, not too far off. And then the target balances here, as you go down those categories and add them up, that puts us in this 80 million category, which would be higher than in the past. But I think knowing that we're, you know, entering more uncertainty going forward, both on the climate side and the financial side. And knowing just, you know, how quickly our revenues were used or reserves were used in the last two years. I think it's prudent to have a target balance a little bit higher than the past, but you know, 81 over 71, it's not a huge change. So again, what my recommendations would be, and I'm happy to take board feedback here, would be to establish these minimums and the target balances. And to kind of modify that the use is there and to get us in this range between 53 million and 81 million as an overall funding target over the next four years. So just to recap, and I'll turn it back to the board here after this slide. You know, we did modify our budget and our rate structure quite significantly last year. Reducing our fixed fees does increase our financial risk and it increases our reliance on variable water sales. Reserve balances, you know, not only are important for how we manage our organization, but also how others look at our organization. And so the policies are one piece of that. And then how we, you know, actually adhere to our policies is the second piece to that. Knowing we've used our reserves in the last two years and knowing that, you know, we do have to have money set aside for, you know, drought reserves and water sales losses going forward. We are recommending these changes in the policy to kind of refine and/or define the purpose for each reserve fund. And to add minimum and target balances for each reserve fund. And then based on board feedback today, the next step would be bringing this back to the full board with a full red line of our actual policies. So you can see it, you know, in more detail and to reflect more direction. So with that, I will turn it over to the board.
Great. Brett, maybe you can keep slide 16 up because I think that'll help us, you know, engage in the conversation. I think it's important to note that even the minimums here are going to take us a few years to achieve, right? We, we, we have depleted our reserves over the last few years. We were losing a million dollars per month. And to deal with the impact of drought, you know, we're in a rebuild mode. So even getting those minimums is going to take some time. So I think everyone should realize that this is getting us back hopefully to the, to a place of a good conservative agency. So why don't we go around for any board comment, please?
Brett, thank you very much for the presentation and for the deep dive into this. This is a big, big load of work. So thank you. Looking at the first item, the insurance piece, I, I agree with the recommendation that two X of that. I just get concerned that the, the actual deductible will increase quite a bit as we move forward over the next five, 10 years, based on the uncertainty in climate and the risk we're seeing in the insurance market, just on the residential side here locally. And, and the state's still struggling to try to get their hands on it. And even though we deal with a non-admitted carrier, I think it's, it's important to look at that number, making sure we're, we're spot on with that. And the only other recommendation I have for this is to take a look at the capital piece. And the reason for that is looking at the grant match side, I'm hoping that, you know, for the next five, again, 10 years, that we're really aggressive with the grant piece. And I would hate to have to start robbing Peter to pay Paul for grant matches or have a, a healthy pot of money, which, which we can leverage as our contribution to be more competitive when we're going for a lot of these grants that will be, you know, obviously a very competitive process with other water districts around. So those are my last two comments. Thank you.
Ranji? Yeah, thanks Brett. My thanks as well for this analysis and the presentation. I think you've heard me say, you know, multiple times over the last six months that I was always, I was always surprised by the accumulation of our unrestricted reserves in the past. Obviously, as you've pointed out, that saved us during the drought. But on the other hand, I've asked you many times, you know, whether the money could have been used more effectively to, to help us avoid some of the really harsh consequences of the drought. I know that's not the only issue you're trying to address here, but I do feel like your presentation provides maybe a, a, a more productive use of our reserves. And so overall, I, I find that really compelling. Just a few, maybe a few questions. I just, I, I, on, on drought rates. Those kick in as we hit certain benchmarks in our water supply. We also have, I believe voluntary conservation measures that we can employ up to a certain limit. At some point they become fixed conservation. So just wanted to confirm that. I think the water supply project reserve, although small, given the needs for the costs related to water supply development. I think to Matt's point, again, this, and what you met, what you've noted right here provides a really important source for grant matching. So I hope everyone really keeps that in mind. Maybe the, 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 the item here that catches my attention most significantly is the pension stabilization. A reserve, we had spoken about this at the last committee meeting. And he noted, noted the importance of having something that would buffer us against, you know, poor market performance. So great to see that. But when we spoke about it last month, you also mentioned options for setting up trusts. And you've chosen not to do that. I'm just wondering what the, what you see as the advantage of having our own reserve there.
Sure. So I think what I mentioned last time is, you know, when you, when most agencies talk about setting up trusts for pension or unfunded liabilities, it's when you're kind of at a time of excess. So you have, you know, plenty of reserves and they're all full and kind of how to best use the extra money. And so that becomes, you know, a decisional in, 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 in two of itself. And so I guess the trust funds are set up there to allow agencies like ours, public agencies to make a greater return on your investment than you can get through LEAF or through normal, just, you know, reserve funding. So that's the, that's how they sell it, right? CalPERS sells that as, you know, if you give us X amount of dollars, you can make 6% instead of your 2% in LEAF or 3% in LEAF. The problem there is that you're locked in, you have to use that only for pensions and also there's risk involved, right? There is risk and we can lose, you can lose money at the same time. So it's not probably uncommon to see CalPERS have a five or 10% loss in a year. And then if you had a trust fund set up under a similar, you know, mechanism, you could lose two to 3%, right? And so generally speaking, I think, you know, I feel more comfortable in, you know, 100% safe investments now. Until we get to a point where maybe we can have that discussion on where the best user extra funds. And that's when trusts, you know, typically come in is, is how to, you know, best put our money to work going forward. We do have a trust already set up for our retiree healthcare and that was, you know, set up years ago. And so that is functioning, you know, as, as I just mentioned, it's some gains and some losses each year. And it's not a bad way to go about it. I just, you know, personally prefer to hold our own funds, you know, close to the vest and be able to use them as needed. And once you lock it into a trust, you're adding risk of loss and you're also, you know, limiting the purposes for them in the future. You're limiting your flexibility of how you can use those. So I'm, I'm fine looking into that in a couple of years. I just feel like I'd rather get ourselves back to at least our minimum balances before we really start endeavoring too far down that path.
Great. Appreciate that. Thanks Brett.
That satisfies your question. Monty?
Yeah, I won't reiterate. The comments have already been made about, about all the work that you put into this and some of the things that you've raised. I want to ask the question, I, I do really think that, that cost sharing is something we got to look at. And given Jed's report out about his meetings in DC. If we can do some sort of estimate of what, what our range of potential need is in the next number of years, so that we make sure that we're well set up to be able to take advantage of, of any cost sharing that we can, that ultimately is a really great service to the district. The other question I have is, is at our current projected budget, when will we get to that minimum that we're building back our reserves? Cause I'm concerned that, that while we've been in a relatively stable weather pattern, at least the last two years. We don't know that that's going to be the case. And so I'm curious where we expect to get back to a, a sort of a safety threshold of our minimum.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. And so without flipping the slides back and forth, our, our current balance is about 41 million in our reserves. And you can see the minimum there would be 53 if we go forward with this. In the budget and in the rate cycle that we've set, we have a $5 million per year program to go to reserve. So that'll end up being 20 million. And so that'll take us from the 40 million range into the, you know, 60 millionish range. So we'll have passed the minimum if all goes to plan. At about the year three of our rate cycle, as we're beginning to look at the next rate cycle. So, you know, conveniently and or just the way things work out, you know, we'll be in that range between the 50 and 83. If things work to plan over the next two to three years, and that's when we'd be taking a second look at this as we prepare for the next rate cycle.
Okay, thank you. Larry?
Thank you very much. I'm, I, I think your concept of the retirement set aside is brilliant. I think it's a, it's a great use. I've never heard it discussed before. I think the idea of having that buffer makes a lot of sense. The one thing you don't talk about is which of these are hot money? In the business sense, you know, which can be buried just to sit there? And which do you need in a cash flow standpoint? In other words, you know, how much money can we put away? And call it what you want. You know, CD or whatever you want to call it. I mean, the money markets right now are paying 5%. Give or take, you know? And leaps up to what? Two, two or something like that?
It's in the threes, I think, but yeah.
So, you know, when you talk about these kinds of dollars, doubling the interest rate or 80% higher is makes a big difference. I, you know, I, I guess I'm the only one who's been burned physically in this Lehman Brothers thing. I mean, you know, all of us were burned, but you know, the concept was that was the gold standard and they went down. So, you know, I, I don't know, you, you mentioned the risk side, you didn't mention the return side of the CalPERS side. You know, that they're, they're offering 6%. You know, there's something to think about there, it seems to me. I understand you can't get it back. But, you know, we're in the business for the long run. So. Yeah. But anyway, it's a great track. Just give some thought to, like I say, marking which of these are hot money and which aren't. Because some of them like the insurance reserves, I mean, could be sit over there, you know, if you're going to need them, you need them. But it won't be, I don't know, years probably after the event occurs that you really need major insurance input.
I would agree with what you're saying. And I think the top two there are more like you're saying, you know, you don't touch those as much because they're insurance reserves. And that's why typically, you know, other agencies don't even really mention them in a board policy. And I think if, if I'm gathering what you're saying about hot money, I think the rest of those, you know, from capital all the way down to pension stabilization. Those are, you know, set with a purpose. And I'm trying to find the purpose here, but the board ultimately has flexibility. You know, there's nothing binding in any of this, right? And so I think, you know, it's just, it's just a way for us to, you know, manage to it from behind the scenes and be able to kind of have a common conversation in terms of when we're using and why we're using it. But at the end of the day, it's really all up kind of to the board for the final.
Of course, but what I'm saying is if, if it's not foreseeable in the political business. There's hot money and not hot money. Hot money, the bank holds the money for the political campaigns, but it can't do anything with it. Can't, can't bind it at all. Cause it can be drawn. Can't, can't bind it at all because it can be drawn on like that. The ones that aren't that way can get set aside. That, that's all I'm trying to do is I don't care what you call it, but you know, think about it that way, that which of these monies might we need in the short term? For instance, grant matching, that's obviously you're going to have to have cash flow. The other ones, you know, it gets a little trickier.
Great. Well, I, I think this is an extremely well thought through plan by the leadership team, by Brett and your staff. And I appreciated working with you in the, in this thought process. And most significantly is the reduction of our minimum, you know, which, which is I think a great savings for our, for our customers. And hearing no dissent or major pushback from the board, I, I think, I think you're really, you're on the right track. And the, and the next step will be how we define the purpose as the previous discussion just came through. So, so we'll get into some of the details of how and when these funds can be accessed. And, and give you some clarity and or some, some room to, to make decisions on the fly as they come up. And reiterating the importance of that matching funds that's available through the water supply project reserve coming out of DC, that was critical, right? And some agencies require 25%, some require 50%, some 65%. They all have very clearly defined matching requirements. And this is going to give us the ability to move on the fly and have that money available for us. So I'm supportive and unless there's any more questions, we'll go to public comment and, and then we'll motion to move this to the board.
Yes, we have Mr. Ed Jamison.
Yes, thanks. This was another outstanding and thoughtful presentation by Mr. Upandall. I'm concerned that the reserves for new water supply, adding only two and a half million a year to a present balance of zero will be inadequate to support water supply bonding needs that are likely on the order of 300 to $400 million or perhaps even more. And it's important that our limited bonding capacity not be used to fund normal maintenance and repair costs in the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you. I have no further speakers. Oh, sorry, someone did pop up. Mr. Gaylord, please.
Thank you. Just, just a, thank you. Just a quick question, a clarifying question. If, if the board approves a new reserve level at a bucket level, would the board still have the flexibility to move between those buckets or would they, would their hands be held? In other words, if they approved, say, 70,000 or 70 million in reserves, would they still have the ability to shift those throughout the course of a period or would that be locked in? Thanks.
Thank you.
Feel free to answer that.
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, the board always has ultimate authority to move around, you know, as, as much as is needed, you know, throughout any year going forward. I think the risk you take there is just, you know, kind of the reputation risk with bond rating agencies or anyone else looking at you. If you're moving things around, you know, too willy nilly, that, you know, becomes a little bit of a red flag. But I think generally speaking, you know, you set the levels there and then the board ultimately has flexibility over any of the individual buckets as we move forward.
Yeah. And I, I think if this ends up going to the board, which I'm expecting it would, and the board approves it, then we wouldn't be able to shift and change that policy without a public discussion and public conversation and another vote. So it's not something that we can just do behind the scenes. We'd be extraordinarily upfront about it.
That's a very good point. Yes.
So a motion to move this set of recommendations to the board for approval, please.
Absolutely.
Second.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, Brett.